All to order the planning board meeting for February seventh, twenty twenty four. Alphabetical roll call who's here, Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmark here.
Kevin Heine here.
Cassandra Thayer is here. Is Angela with us tonight?
And not doing the minutes for you anymore.
Well, who is?
Me. So I'm here.
My uh my minutes have been brought into question, so I am not volunteering to do any.
Uh and Clark is coming in right now.
Okay, we'll wait for him. For anybody out in the public, if you are here for One Pleasant Street, we are expecting that to be continued. And Clark's Clark's here um. As a matter of fact, we'll start with that um just to get it out of the way, I'm gonna make a motion to continue the. Hearing for One Pleasant Street to what was it, March sixth at six thirty?
Um it is March sixth, you should probably officially open it, even though you are just continuing it um just procedurally.
And you want to uh?
Do we wanna uh open the? Public meeting or did you do that already?
No, we're gonna open it and then just quickly get this out of the way, so. Cassandra, if you wouldn't mind.
We did open the public meeting, Clark.
Yeah, that we did, you're here, so.
You were coming in on the back end of it, so you're here um. But yes, we can, I can read the public hearing notice. Uh so this is for One Pleasant Street pursuant to MGL chapter forty A and three hundred dash twelve point seven J. At the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on February seventh, twenty twenty four. At six thirty P M for a village business district site plan review and special permit modification. For property being shown on Cohasset Assessor Maps E five dash zero one eight dash zero one eight. Also known as One Pleasant Street Cohasset Mass zero two zero two five. The application is for Village Business District Site Plan Review and Special Permit Modification, requesting modification to the twenty twenty one Planning Board Decision. This application is submitted by One Pleasant Street Cohasset LLC of Two Heritage Lane, Lynnfield, Mass, zero one nine four zero. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents. Are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Ave. Monday through Thursday, eight A M to four thirty P M and Friday, eight A M to twelve P M. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting Cohasset MA dot org slash five two four slash active P V applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated, signed Thomas J. Callahan Chair Planning Board.
Okay, then with that done, there's been a request by the applicant to continue this, so uh. Make the motion that we continue this to March sixth, twenty twenty four at six thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmark, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Okay, good, alright. That's out of the way, so the next issue for us is Two Pleasant Street. So um. Somebody has been in the Q and A from Acxiom Partners. It's this one, Acxiom Architects, that needs to be promoted, Mr. Keller, so. We could do that and um. Who's gonna speak for Two Pleasant Street? Need to promote.
I am pulling them forward now.
Okay. Okay, we're all here.
Yeah, I'm noticing my video's not on, is my audio on? Could I also uh ask that Jeff Delisi be promoted uh? As um a representative?
Yes, he's being promoted now.
Wonderful.
And who's our peer reviewer on this?
Pat Brennan is the or was the peer review.
Is he here?
He is here, um he didn't have any comments to the changes, um but I can promote him if you'd like, he's here for um another application as well.
Yeah, please, I'd like to just. Have him speak on it.
Sure.
Cassandra, can you point out the document uh that is our peer review?
The one on the website?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, I don't have the website pulled up right now, but um it would. Likely be labeled something along the lines of P G B report or memo. Um I can work on pulling that up in the meantime.
I see one of ten thirty twenty three. And twelve nineteen. So is that the the uh? Report that we're working off of?
Most likely would have been the most recent reports, like I said, Pat, um and I'm sure Pat can speak to this, um he didn't have any comments on the latest stuff.
So it's December nineteenth then?
Well, we could have uh Patrick re- review the latest.
Yeah, so well, let's first, since we haven't seen this in a while, can I just get? First, and your group, that's a very brief overview. Of what this is, what you're proposing, what change you've made. Then we'll go to Patrick and then we'll go to your detailed presentation for you folks.
That's a great idea, thanks, Tom, I'm Jeff Delisi with Orme, you're Delisi and Harris, I'm just gonna defer right over to um Mr. Roberts, who's gonna. Answer those questions for you, and I won't take any more of the board's time at the moment, Mike.
Uh good evening, um. I I I'm a. Uh I thought I'd start with uh.
The the proposal is to take down the existing J J's. Or whatever, the existing commercial building, right?
Yes.
And you wanna replace it with a new? Mixed use building, commercial in front, residential and back and on top.
Yes, that's correct.
Just real brief, what has changed since we were here in November?
Um Austin, do you and Jamie wanna take over on the changes that you made based on the comments of the last hearing?
Yeah, sure, just based on the last hearing, I'll hey, uh Austin Charter with McKinsey Engineering Group with a civil engineer on the project. Based on the last hearing, we just had a few comments about sliding the. Proposed structure off of the MBTA property line, we were proposing it right on the MBTA property line. Which is allowed under zoning, but building code um for egress. And constructability, we slid it three foot off of the building. Um that was the major change, based off of that, we adjusted the building footprint slightly. To stay out of the James Brook easement and also um. You know, meet the building setbacks, so it was really just adjusting the building footprint, sliding it off the property line. And adjusting grading and the site plan from that.
Thanks. So Patrick, we'll just switch to you quick, you've looked at these changes. We'll get, they can go over the details about them in a second, but I'll hear from you first, is there anything that still jumps out at you as an issue that we should be concerned about?
Um no, uh Pat Brennan, um peer review engineer. No, Mr. Chairman, I I did look at the plan, the revised plan, and as Austin mentioned, all they did was slide the building a little. In doing that, they needed to narrow the rear portion of the building from twenty feet to eighteen and a half feet. Which made, it was just the the back portion of the building a little bit narrower. Um they didn't change anything with the drainage design, so you know. Basically, the impervious is the same, so the drainage all works the same. Um and I know at the last meeting, I think it was Mr. Brewer asked um for me to check the. Residential gross floor area on each of the units, and I had done that. And um they are within the 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 limits, basically what they show on the architectural plan is what I came up with with the same gross. Uh square footage on those units, so.
Is is one of the units still over fifteen hundred square feet?
No, no, it's four, it's just under fifteen, it's fourteen, they have it listed as fourteen ninety-five, when I did it, I actually came up with about fourteen ninety.
Plenty of extra room, not not fourteen ninety-nine and a half.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, then um either Mr. Charter or Mr. Keller here, whichever one of you wants to just. Show us exactly what you've done, why don't you do that?
Mike, do you wanna step in here or?
No, I I think um you guys made the changes, you and Jamie made the changes, why don't you just describe what they are and uh?
Do you wanna pull up, you wanna pull up your plan? Yeah, I can, I'll share my screen here.
Did I just steal that?
Oh, no, that's fine, go ahead, Steve.
Um well, this is, uh my name's Steve Noonan from Acxiom, I'm acting on behalf of Jamie who's away um. Um like Austin said, we uh we pulled the building off the property line. We narrowed this rear wing up from twenty feet to eighteen and a half, we basically just pulled this wall in. And then this wall in from this corner here, so the the overall aesthetic of the building. Didn't change aside from the the width of that rear wing, um so really, I mean, that's. That's as far as I know um has changed.
And where's the James Brook culvert?
I'm gonna stop share, okay. I'll hand it over to you, Austin.
Sure. Can you see the site plan here?
Now we can, yeah.
So the James Brook easement is essentially on the south side of the building. Um I guess on the right side of the building, if you're looking from Pleasant Street. And it runs, you know, we're right, right on it, basically the James Brook easement. Um it has, I think, a thirty-six inch culvert underneath it. But so that easement is well off of that culvert, so the easement basically reads that you can't have any. Structure in it, so we're just staying off the easement there, so the the act. You know, the exercise we went through was sliding it three feet off this property line. And adjusting the building footprint to still maximize the space um.
And that, what's, so there's a stairway and a. I guess a walkway that's in the over the easement, but what is that? So rectangle, what's the rectangle that has one point nine feet written in the middle of it?
Yeah, so that's a little flat patio area, that'll just be a paver patio um.
That's not deemed a structure for purposes of the.
Yeah, essentially, nothing with a, you know, a permanent foundation, so. It'll just, that'll be a patio, that's for access to the units on the backside of the building, we have the wraparound porch. Which we actually did have coming all the way around the building, but because of we slid it. We cut that off at the access to the commercial space, or that actually. We cut it off, so it doesn't wrap around to the unit entrance, so it's outside of the easement.
It, what are you gonna use as a um divider uh between the porch and that? Um patio. Is it gonna be a wall, is it gonna be a a fence, what is it, or is it just gonna be stop right in the middle of of uh?
So this, the, yeah, I got, the, so the porch is essentially almost at grade here. Um so it'll be a small step down onto this little patio area. And no, as far as a fence or any barrier like that, this is gonna be open space over the easement as it is today. So you know, you'd never know that there's an easement there when it's all said and done um. But obviously, we. We will, won't have any permanent structures there.
Okay, um another question is, when you um narrowed the building in the back. Is there any encumbrance on a staircase or any? Feature that would be something we'd have to worry about in terms of handicapped access?
No, I mean, there shouldn't be any any worry about that, there's the the building itself, the 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 main floor is set only about six inches. About, you know, average above grade. So wherever, you know, I mean, when we say port, when Austin's saying porch for, you know, it's a covered roof area. Um that's set on essentially, you know, a sidewalk setup, um you know, uh. An entrance setup.
You have a slab on grade, but it it would be fully accessible.
Exactly, yes.
To the parking area, right?
Yes, yes, exactly.
No, there's no steep slope there, it's pretty much.
No, no, no.
You just wanna keep the water out of the porch.
Yes, exactly.
Correct, yep, but you can slope uh like one to twenty-one without a um without railings.
Correct.
So it's, it could just be sidewalk landscaping going to the in in under the porch.
That's what we're imagining, yeah, I mean, if they wanted to slope that down towards the patio. That patio, I mean, I guess that would be an option.
Yeah, just to give you an idea, it's pretty flat out there, we're at eleven point eight, coming down to eleven and a half. At the porch. So that'll all be accessible right from the pavement, essentially. That's great.
Now, uh yeah, Kevin, go ahead, I have a comment to make.
Did uh did the height of any roofs either on the um building that was narrowed? Um or the buildings that remain the same change? Um and if none of the roof, uh if you can answer that question and then also answer the question whether any of the pitch of any of the roof changed?
Um let me just verify, uh right now, we've got the peak of the of the. The the main, the the tallest peak, we've got a thirty-four foot four from the ground level. Uh which is essentially, like I said, six inches below the um, you know, average is six inches below the first, the main level. Um let me, I don't think the the slope changed any. Um let me just check that.
Let me just intervert, Patrick, do you confirm that thirty-four six measurement as well?
Yes, um I did look at that the last time around, and uh. And they did, they did lower it, cuz it was about three feet higher than this previously.
Yeah, I could, one thing I did was we clarified, so we had the building height. I think it did, I think it came down four inches. And then basically that difference to the existing grade out there. Is how it's calculated, so I added this table just for clarification. So our building height per zoning is gonna be thirty-four and a half feet. So that's the peak height of the building to down to the average existing grade. So the building height's about thirty-four feet, but based on how you calculated, it's thirty-four and a half.
Yeah.
That's still less than our requirement. Yeah, so you have a half a foot there.
But it's right, you know, like the others, it's right on the edge, but that's okay.
Right, it's close.
Alright, the 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 other comment, I I noticed that we had a a letter from a butter. Who, if you could go to the site plan again and.
Site plan?
Yeah, the site plan and go to the intersection of James and Pleasant. Uh and Butter expressed a concern um. You know, that people will come through James Lane, trying to use that as a shortcut to get to the harbor, to to the downtown. Rather than go around, um you know, go to Cushing and Pleasantville. Take the little L and go on James. And the comment was about us requiring a sidewalk along the front of your property. And I think it's a point well taken, and I'm wondering uh what you thought about that, I understand there's a crosswalk to the other side of the street, but uh. Um what are, what are your thoughts about that?
So I can handle that, so yeah, as you mentioned, there is a sidewalk coming down James Lane. That does go across Pleasant Street to the other side. Um all I would say that if we did put a crosswalk on our side of the road. As you can see, the right away of Pleasant Street. Um it would essentially wouldn't be, it would be on our property, not on town property.
Yeah.
Um. But no, I mean, I could let Mike speak to that, there's no reason we couldn't throw one in there to connect it. If that's something. That you'd wanna see, I don't, you know.
And Butter brought it up, and I'm sure the butter was aware of the crosswalk and the access to the sidewalk on the other side of the street, but uh. I'd I'd throw it out there for your consideration and the board's consideration, but I don't know if anybody else on the board saw that letter.
I did.
Alright, yeah, if Mr. Roberts, if you wanna. Tackle that one for a minute.
Um if Austin says that it's doable, it's not gonna impact uh turning radius in the driveway um. The the road cut, and we can do it, we're, we built, we built the original sidewalk on James Lane. Um and I bought, there was no sidewalk on James Lane when we did the development. Uh before, so we built that sidewalk, a continuation of the sidewalk, if it works. Uh could be added to the plan, and if you made that one of the conditions, uh we'd be agreeable to it. Um as assuming uh Austin says it's feasible.
Alright, that's. Very good, thank you, um anybody else in the board have any comments?
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
Uh in the diagrams in the entire packet. There was a differentiation between a skirt around some of the residences that was uh. At granite or um some type of. Uh solid stone versus blacktop, and the um blacktopped area uh looked to me like it was. Um not just flat, but had the potential for if there's any flooding in that area. That the water would go into the garage, so what was the thinking and why are those pictures there?
I think that that was raised when we um originally um submitted the project for approval. Uh just before COVID. And the peer review. Noticed that there were differences between the approved site plan and what we had done. And the request of the peer reviewer was to uh check the the drainage calculations. We did it because we ended up building a a sidewalk on the James Lane in front of the four buildings. That was uh that was not so, it was not necessarily gonna be there, but we used, we did the drainage calculations. And um and and later on, Austin did some new drainage calculations, and he determined that we have the same uh. Same drainage, we just moved around the um the pavers. Uh we haven't had any flooding issues um there, I I think people don't really realize that before. We built the development uh to the right-hand side of where the ice cream shop was, there was always a low area.
Yeah.
And the 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 problem is all the water from the hills around James Lane. Would pour into that when the snow melted and when it rained hard, and essentially part of that property was a catch basin. For all the water, and uh the drainage plan that Austin came up with uh. Dealt with that in in an extraordinary way, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any flooding, it was uh significant flooding prior to the. Development and after we made the uh improvements and built the houses, I've heard of no uh flooding down there. And we haven't had anybody, I I've heard no comments about water in any garages at any time in the five years since we've had occupancy.
Alright, thank you.
Um, let's see.
So yeah, just a um it sliding the uh the building off of the property line, I think I raised up the fire rating issues. Uh relative to putting a a wood structure right on the the property line, so um there's. There's window opening um uh related size, the amount of area that the windows are open. And you know, obviously, the 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 architect has to. Has to put together stamp drawings and get a building permit, so um I I don't think that's an issue anymore, I don't, I know that. I know that for residential construction. And this is mixed use, so it falls into the commercial code. That um uh that windows can't be any closer than three feet. But and and you're right at three feet, so that these should work, um and I I just don't have a handle on the on the area counts. Um but uh you know, I'll, I I I raised the flag, so you you guys responded. Seems like you responded adequately, and I I'm gonna let this one go, looks good.
I did, I did check um the area of that um wall that we pushed back. Yeah, um in comparison and and checked the windows, and we're we're. The code says we have fifteen percent of the wall area for windows.
Yep.
And I'll, I I think we're ver- we're, if we're not over, we're very close, um so we'll 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 be taking a final look at the windows anyways.
Yeah, you you'll probably do a a summary as a part of like the front end on your on your permit package.
Right.
Um but I, you know, I just say um, you know, there is some, just so you know, there's there's some specialized detailing, like. You need certain blocking at the at the rafters. Um uh and uh it whether it's one hour or unrated that close to the property line, it's. That's your, that's your job to figure out, that's why you get all the big money.
That's right, yeah, we'll make sure that it's it's all taken care of, um Jamie will most likely be jumping back in on it um. After, you know, for the permit drawings, so we'll we'll collaborate together and.
Sure, but but my comment would be, project looks good.
Great, I think it looks, yeah, I think it looks great.
Just wanted, I looked it up, I just wanted to mention that the the butter notice about the sidewalk was from uh Robert Tomfree, who lives at fifteen James Lane. Uh are there any members of the public that are out there that have any comments or questions? I think everybody, I think everybody who's here is for the another project. Alright, well, with that um. Board has nothing else, why don't you change a motion?
One more comment, it looks like that that south section of of roof or or west southwest section of roof. Has a pretty good o- open area for uh solar panels. And uh being, just another reminder to the to the architecture team. That there's, there's been a a change in the code where you have to have a dedicated. Um solar ready area.
Yeah.
It almost looks like you could lease the those roofs right now, the important thing to not forget with your um structural engineer. Is the extra five pounds per square foot for those solar panels, if it's a solar ready area, you gotta have a structure that uh can handle it.
Great, thank you very much.
I've been through all the the Mass Save seminars, probably like fifteen or twenty of them, and it's um. It's, it's interesting, uh but there's. A lot of detail and particulars to it. So you just wanna double check it with your engineers and the and the new code uh and get it right.
Right, thank you, I'll uh make sure I note that.
Sure.
Alright, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion from someone on the board.
Make a motion, we approve uh as uh with the amendments discussed and and as uh presented in its final form. Including a sidewalk uh along the uh front um property line. Of. Whatever the. Required size would be.
Okay. And we're approving what, a modification, not a new special permit or?
It's a modification to the original special permit.
Alright, so. Motion is to approve the modification with all updates to the plans and including the sidewalk along. Pleasant Street. Second. I'll second it, any further discussion, if not, um all in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmark, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Okay, thank you all.
That's your super majority.
Thank you very much.
Yep, good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
It looks good, good luck with your project.
Thank you, we really appreciate it. Take care, thank you.
Alright, so.
Oh, have a, take care.
Moving along, moving right along. The next is the continued hearing we have on a common driveway for ninety four, ninety-eight one oh four Howard Gleason Road. Uh so who do we have here for that?
So. Wasn't that Carmen?
It's Carmen and myself.
Carmen's being pulled forward, and Jeff is conveniently already here.
Okay, so um.
Wasn't this almost there last time?
Yeah, we were almost there, Jeff, again, briefly, where are we, and then then I'll go to Patrick and then I'll go to you for details, but just. Where where are we here tonight?
Really, uh we were just about there, uh the. Really, we were just about there. Carmen made a change to the plan that just made the drainage situation a little better. I think that there was testimony at the last meeting that Pat agreed with Carmen's calculation that the post-construction water flow to Howard Gleason would be less than what is there now. And this driveway, even though we discussed at length the issue of the fact that we had a zoning freeze on the property, the driveway was actually constructed to the current standards. The only reason why the zoning freeze really matters is the distinction, which is a nuanced distinction, but an important one for legal purposes, between a special permit scenario, which requires a super majority versus a simple majority scenario, which is the circumstance in the zoning freeze scenario. That was it. Carmen can, I think that Pat has reviewed Carmen's plans and he can speak, but he didn't, I think that everything was solved. And there's really nothing left to discuss, but Carmen, I'll defer to you.
Let me defer to Patrick first, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you. So I did review, I submitted a letter today, and I apologize for that. I had it ready to go on January 22nd, and I I was waiting for one final revision that I did receive. So the major changes to the plan from the drainage standpoint is they previously, they didn't have the drainage, the subsurface infiltration facilities within easements. So they did provide easements around those structures. And if you recall, the catch basins on the driveway, you know, at least one of them is on a fairly steep slope. So I had recommended a certain type of a grate on the catch basin, as well as making them double grates. And they did do those, they made those changes as well. Those were the big drainage issues that they took care of. I know that there was also some discussion the last time around about the the elevation of the driveway coming in from Howard Gleason. And that in relation to the flood zone. And I believe, right now, the flood zone, the the water based on the flood elevation can go up about 200 feet on the driveway. With the proposed driveway, they are raising the elevation at the bottom of it, which was shown in the previous version of the plans, but just to clarify, they did raise it, it is raised so that the water will not reach as high up the driveway as it does today. I believe they're reducing that by about 150 feet, if I remember correctly. But Carmen can chime in on that as well. But the drainage issues that I was concerned about, they did take care of. So I'm comfortable with it at this point.
Amy, do you have your hand up for something on this?
I just was, because I wasn't at the meeting, I was not familiar with the underlying purpose for the A and R, and whether or not the there was any environmental factors that would.
Are you, are you confused?
Common driveway.
Are you confusing this with the other one we have?
So this is Gleason?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's the common driveway.
Sorry, yeah. I
I believe we have been informed by on this project by Concom that this is going to require permitting with Concom. So our decision here, I think, will be conditioned on getting that permit with the possibility that, depending on what they do, that our permit may change, just need modification as well. All right. Does anybody want to just throw up the plan and just show us where these changes have been made? Otherwise, we, I think we can proceed without that if everybody's comfortable.
As Carmen's doing that, we're also, we also have to, we are also in the jurisdiction of the zoning board insofar as some improvement is within the flood plain. So we have to go over there as well.
So our decision will be conditioned on approval of both of those, with the understanding if they make some changes, we may have to modify them. Just very brief.
We can't see the whole plan. The top of it is obscured by the margin. There we go. Now, center it up a little bit. You've got maybe, yep. You want to bring it down as about two inches.
Okay. No worries. No worries.
So around these drainage structures, Jeff, you've put, you've extended the easements to include these structures, is that?
We, so we have easements in another sheet. As far as the drainage changes are concerned, they were the two catch basins were converted into double catch basins. And the structure that we were proposing before and after the infiltration systems were changed per Pat's direction. And the Pat had mentioned that we had, we were proposing to push the, so we're filling the about two feet of the driveway. So elevation 10 is the flood plain right now, which is over here, more or less 200 feet in. And we're pushing it back to about 100 feet in elevation 10. So only about 100 feet of the driveway will be within the flood plain after the work is done. So that was what was just discussed. If there is anything else that you would like me to show you?
So when I, when I was in on this discussion two meetings ago, I asked a question, which is, are we in any way liable or going to run into difficulty regarding the fact that we're acknowledging the existence of a portion of a driveway that will flood at intervals that we cannot imagine, we can't, we cannot specify, but that it is a hazard? So how was that dealt with?
I want to make sure that I understand. So this is, the flood plain is already is elevation 10. So it's not, it's not unknown. I believe the last time we were talking about king tides, and since then, I reviewed our pictures, because I did go to the site back in 2018 during a king tide. And I can show you those pictures, but at that time, the only portion of the road that was flooded was at this end. And the parking lot of the yacht club was flooded, but the flood didn't extend to the side of the of the road that where the this this driveway has access. Yeah. And I also spoke with the current owner of 98 Black Horse Lane. Since he purchased the property and the home was being constructed, he went weekly to the site. And he has been living there now. And he also testified that he has never seen the flood from the tide cross the street. So that was, I believe, in my response as well. But as far as the flood plain is concerned, the flood plain is elevation 10. So that is the 100-year coastal storm. And the portion of the driveway that is at and below the flood plain has been cut in half. I don't know if that answers your question.
So it's accommodated by the actual landowner as to whether or not a flood of half the length could happen, but not be considered a hazard?
Yeah. So thus far, that the flood that has gone up to elevation 10 and has covered the existing driveway by about 200 feet hasn't happened in about the past year, I believe, or two years.
So will that be, will that be indicated somewhere on a deed of some type that so that it is made known on the part of anybody that would purchase a lot?
So that would be the the decision, your written decision would be required to be recorded in the chain of title and would be viewed by all subsequent buyers of the property. And so to the extent that that's addressed in the written decision, it's it's noticed to the world.
Okay, that's great. So I don't think we've spoken about that in exactly the way you just described it. So I would request that that be part of our decision. Is that the right way to say it?
However, your decision.
Yeah, usually is. Yeah, that's absolutely. Okay. So let me just switch. Anybody else in the public have any questions, comments about this project? See, we have two people out there. I don't know if they're here to that particular project.
Yeah, just one, one quick comment. This is the one where the the common driveway meets or exceeds both the previous common driveway standards and the current common driveway standards. Isn't that right? It meets or exceeds both of those standards, which seems reassuring as an approach, right? And in addition, as a as a common driveway, the town does plow common driveways that have three or more houses on it. Presumably, that's still the case. Apparently, there was some town meeting vote in the 50s on this.
I can't comment on that, Clark.
But you haven't, you haven't addressed any plowing issue. It would just be worked out with the DPW. Here's a new common driveway.
Yeah, no, we have not addressed it. It, to the extent that it becomes an issue, would have to be addressed with the DPW.
Right.
I'm not certain whether the property owner in this circumstance might might want to just just do it himself. I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, I mean.
Typically, typically, what happens is is the homeowners that utilize the common driveway, like, we will have a common driveway agreement that will protect the other, you know, that will protect each property owner for for maintenance purposes for the driveways. And, you know, and 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 they would contribute to a fund and 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 take on that obligation themselves. I, I, I don't want to box anybody in, but I do not expect that anybody's going to be asking the DPW to take on any maintenance responsibility with this.
Sure. Good.
Okay. There's nothing else? Are we ready to close this and entertain a motion?
Yeah, a motion to close and approve the common driveway as it exists in its final form.
As amended to date and with the, subject to the decisions of the zoning board of appeals.
Final form or amended to date.
Okay. Second, anyone? Just I'll second it again. All right, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
I, Tom, I was on mute. I have one point of clarification. Amy talked about language that would identify the flood zone demarcation and the location of it on here. Is that a part of what we're approving as well? I didn't hear that as a part of the, how this was just described.
Is the flood plain not demarcated?
Elevation 10.
Yeah.
And it is the existing and proposed elevation 10s are shown on the plan.
And there's a note on the plan that indicates that the flood zone is elevation 10. So it's covered.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will continue the roll call vote and vote aye as well.
Okay. Thank you all. We're all set. And thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Very much appreciated.
Rolling right along.
We have one final A and R?
Yeah, it's on the under 7:30, although technically, everything is set for 6:30. So we have, it looks like we have.
Who's the engineer on this one?
I don't know. It looks like we have two people out there, I assume, there for this project. So I guess we can get started. And if anybody else joins in, we'll just maybe have to repeat some things. But anyway, so we don't have to read a notice for this.
No, correct. You do not have to read a notice for this. The owner of the properties here, they've declined to be promoted. The engineer on the project was Merrill. Obviously, since Carmen has signed off, she's not the representative from Merrill. There is one other person in the audience that I don't recognize the name. If they are from Merrill, they're rather than welcome, but.
That's Charlie Higginson of the zoning board's wife.
No, 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 the other person. I know Charlie.
I only see two people and then those five, so.
So I'm not sure who's here, but if you wanted to maybe give them a few minutes and approve minutes or something in the meantime.
Brendan Sullivan did the drawing.
Yeah, if they did, if they thought took this 7:30 as gospel, let's just give them a few minutes then. So we do have some minutes to approve. Those are from what? Update, I saw that.
From your last meeting on January 17th.
Do you have any issues, questions with that? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January, what it was again, I'm sorry.
17th.
17th.
Approve.
Okay. And that was seconded. All right, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Okay. Let's see, we have 12 minutes. I can talk for 12 minutes. And, you know, Mrs. Higginson just said Brendan Sullivan will be representing, so we'll just wait for Brendan. The bylaw committee Monday night, again. We are moving along with a number of things. We are fairly close to finish with the text of the housing choice. Consultant is just doing some tweaks and calculations regarding parking. They modeled that district based on one space per unit. And we are asking them to model at 1.5 as well and see how that affects the district that's proposed. I did have a conversation with the planner in Hingham today. Hingham, their housing choice calculations are also modeling to 1.5 spaces per unit. We are also working on a development impact by law. And we found out yesterday that we seem to have more money to utilize town council than we thought we had. So we will be bringing in town council to review when we are at or near final product. And Clark, I sent around an email to the members of the board, you know, because you and Jack weren't there, just updating on where we were, what's on for the next time, and then updating what should go to town council. You know, and so, you know, as we sit here today, again, with the select board, we you know, there's nine possible warrant articles, but there's certain priorities amongst them. What we will get to in the end is not sure. This board, you know, for our review, might need to have two meetings to do it. Again, it all depends on what we're looking at. So you can almost assuredly see that you'll, there's two articles that I think are short and sweet. And again, the bylaw committee still has to finally sign off on them. But on, you know, the final reorganization of the bylaw and the condensing of all of our 22 articles into something smaller. Then on substance, you know, we have to do housing choice.
Brendan Sullivan's on.
Okay, yeah. And then, all right, so that's just, we're moving along, but you'll see housing choice, you'll see development impact, and you'll see some some possible substantive changes to dimensions in Article 5. And then whether we get to the other three, which are more housekeeping in nature, I don't know. Anyway, that's the update for them. And we're continuing to meeting at a two, two, two meetings a month pace. That's going to continue for the foreseeable future. All right, Brendan, you're Alright, Brendan, you're on and we're ready to go.
Yes, good evening. Um, sorry for my late arrival, I was at my own plan.
No, that's alright. We, we. You know, we, we put times, but everything technically is at six thirty and we try to keep just, keep going along, so.
Sure, sure, no, I, I.
Alright, so for anybody out there in the public, uh, we're here for an A and R application for, what is it, one fifty-nine Atlantic?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so Brendan, you have the floor.
Great, um, thank you. So um, I shared my screen, I got the um. The property for a one fifty-nine Atlantic Ave owned by um, Charlie and Janerber Higginson, uh, a one fifty-nine Atlantic. Um, so it is um, bordered by, on the um. On the west by Atlantic Ave, uh, by the south into the east, uh, by uh, Lothrup Lane, a private road. Um, that serves a few houses down beyond Lothrup Lane as well. Um, so we're actually subdividing this under the um. This section of the zoning by law, which allows a reduced lot area. Um, if you have more than a hundred and twenty square feet, um, you can divide it into uh, twenty square foot, twenty thousand square foot lots. As long as the average is above um, sixty thousand, uh, which is what we.
Where is that, where is that in the bylaw?
Um, that is in um.
That in, in the area table?
It's in the, it's in the area table. Um, I believe it's um, one of the subsections of the area table. Um.
We leave it to a member of the zoning board to find that one. We don't see this every day.
No, no, this is, it's um. It's a little, a little unique, which is nice. Um.
Yeah, it's.
So.
See if I can find it.
I see if I can find it too.
In, in your comments, can you explain? Or maybe Tom will have to explain, what's the rationale for this particular piece of uh, zoning?
What's, what's the rationale?
Yeah, is to, I mean, is it to basically get rid of a scab or what is it about?
Um, I don't know, it is, it has been there for a number of years and um, I don't think I've ever actually done a um. Um, a subdivision into this section. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mean to. Us chops here that I'm looking for in the table.
Tommy, you need to place your, your um, computer, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm, I, well, I know, I know there's a concern that what's being split off is mostly wetlands and unbuildable, so that. That normally would beg the question is why it's, why is this being done? But I'm, I'm looking for the provision.
So it's in the, if you, if you open up the um, the, the attachment to one, which is the um, area regulations.
Yeah.
So the chart, um, let's see if I can um. Maybe pull it up here if I, do I stop share?
Is this, is this an RC zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, that's not it.
Not withstanding the floor going.
Well, the residents, once they um, change the lot line, will they then have a taxable piece of property that now inherit? Do, it becomes a taxable property, correct?
It's taxable now, it's gonna be commerce separate. Eventually, the assessors office will catch up with it and. Identify it as a separate parcel, but it's taxed now as part of a single parcel.
Well, that's correct, but if, if things were to change, I mean, so. I, I'm just curious whether or not they're better off not doing this versus doing it from tax perspective.
Well, they wanna subdivide the lot and, and either sell it or put a house on it.
So this is note four of the.
Yeah, so it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the note four, so it is a little weird and a little unique to us, I guess. Um.
So it is this section right here, notwithstanding for going in RC district, so a lot area contains exceeding hundred and twenty square feet. Um, below is exclusive low being mean high water, which we have. Um. And this is about lots adjacent to the same owners. Um, but. So the requirement that each lots must contain sixty thousand square feet is varied to an extent. That no lot subdivision may contain less than twenty thousand square feet if the average size of the areas of all lots combined contained in a subdivision plan. Of said lot or said adjacent amount lot. Amount to at least sixty thousand square feet, exclusive of ways and roads.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Here, here's my question. We amended the table at the last town meeting. Did this note survive?
Um, this note is under the current.
Now, well, the current, the current is.
The new one.
The, the, the new one is not yet approved by the AG, but you know, then we get into that. Once the AG approves it, it's retroactive to today at past town meeting, so in effect, it would apply to this lot. And I'm just, I don't know, Cassandra, I'm looking through the, you know, my stuff on my computer to see if I have the. What we did to Article Four, but we did change everything, we changed the table, so. I just wanna make sure this note survived, cuz it is unique.
Right.
To be, to be sure, and under that language, because we still are dealing with a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. The average is sixty for two lots, and so this would comply with that note four, but did, did note four survive? That's the question. Cassandra, I don't know if you can quickly find it, I'm trying to, but uh.
Yeah, I just um. I just pulled it up, I just have to scroll through, through and see if I can find it.
Gotta get a. We gotta get a grip on the changes as we're going along to have them in an easily findable way. Um. But we're, we're, we're in that period of time where the, the bylaw change has not yet been approved, but if it. Ends up getting approved, which we would expect, it's made retroactive, so uh. Um.
And that was, that, was that at the fall?
That was at the fall town meeting, yeah. We, we made. We made changes to the whole of Article Four, including a new table. That, that. The table itself was kind of moved its location. I don't know how substantial the changes were, and that's the question, do this note survive?
I don't see it in supplemental regulations, three hundred and five point four.
What do you mean five point four?
Supplemental regulations, five point four.
He's talking about the new.
Section five is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Looking at the new.
No, you're right, you're right. I'm having a brain meltdown. I'm thinking of Article Four that we changed substantially. We. We changed five a little bit, but we didn't really change the substance of five. Now, wait a minute, that, I, my mistake, guys, I'm sorry. Somewhere I now have, cuz Cassandra shared with me the other day. At the article file. Just can't find it. Does anybody find that doing a search through emails on Outlook is really difficult?
Yes. It's not just you.
The new Outlook, yes, is awful.
Yeah, I, I wish the town would. Alright, here we are. Articles four and five, how they passed the town meeting, so let's see. Articles five, we did the table. Sixty thousand square feet, note nine.
You know, interestingly enough, I was on the zoning bylaw committee ahead of the town meeting vote. I don't remember talking about this one at all.
No, I, the, the judge did some changes. And, you know, we, we went through.
Simplified things.
Yeah, she did. Now, a lot of the notes, you know. For example, for residency, when it says sixty thousand square feet, but it has to be eighty if you're gonna use two family and then. Another ten thousand square feet for every house above that. That's still there, those notes are still there.
Yeah, yeah, and we did talk about that, that the nineteen.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm not, I'm not.
Family.
I'm not seeing these notes that.
I looked, I didn't see it.
But uh. Are there, so I'm not sure that um.
Hey, we changed the zoning bylaw and nobody knew.
I mean, you know, it, well.
Supplement the basic. Um.
Yeah, the, 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 the basic notes that were in the table itself.
Tom, we can't hear you.
The, the basic notes that were like. Footnoted in the table itself all survived. But I'm not seeing that this particular thing survived. Change.
Uh, so we uh, statutorily have a, a brief period of time to either approve or, or not to endorse or not endorse.
I think that we would wanna make a uh. Um, we, it sounded like we were quite uncertain about whether this was a good idea or a remnant of a past time. So I think we would have to have a whole discussion about the value of this particular piece of zoning.
Well, we don't know if it exists anymore.
I know, but I'm saying that the way we ought to, to be at least thinking about it is. We just had a conversation about, oh, gee, this seems uh, unusual and why is it here? So I would like somebody to make a recommendation as to how we get ourselves into a.
Well, you could, you could subdivide a lot, eh, that's not a buildable lot. Um, you, you know, it's not an endorsement of meeting zoning. Um, so, I mean, we could endorse it as a division of a lot and um. And it would be under the obligation of the. Owner and his applicant. Uh, representative to, to figure out whether it's a, a buildable lot or it's just um. And. More invisible lines in his front yard, backyard, sorry.
Well, that's. That's correct, but there might also be other implications and I would think that the applicant would want to step back. Us verify what exists and then allow them to have a second consideration for their own.
Yeah, but, but for A and R, isn't it, it's, it's uh, access and frontage and the access can't be illusory. Um, the, this guarantee of meeting zoning, like I said, so.
But Clark, we can't, I don't even think we can entertain. Creating a lot. That. Can't legally exist. And if, if this. Note four no longer exists, I, I. So it's funny that Carolyn Murray couldn't make it tonight and she said, is that okay? And should I send somebody? And I said, well, I don't think we have anything controversial and here we do.
Well, yeah, and, and I mean.
But, but let me ask you this.
Four is on the drawing as the basis for, for the zoning.
Yeah, I understand if it's, if it's on the drawing, but it might be on the drawing incorrectly because the bylaw changed.
Right.
Uh, so. Uh.
I don't wanna make a hasty decision.
No, no, but I also, Cassandra, did I see a note in your memo today that we have a time deadline on this one?
Yes, you have a time deadline on all. A and Rs, um, so your deadline is next Wednesday.
We could ask that the um, that the applicant withdraw on their own volition. We could. Um. We could vote to either endorse or we could invoke to deny endorsement.
Yeah, I. I.
Those are the three options.
Charlie, if you're out there, I, I would really ask you to consider either. Withdrawing this until we can get town council to weigh in. Or at least agreeing to a continuance of, you know, our deadline to make a decision beyond next week. We're not meeting again until the twenty eighth.
Yeah, I, yeah, we're, we are, we don't, obviously don't wanna denial. We certainly wanna either continue or withdraw. If we could continue, that'd probably be best.
Yeah, and again, without town council, I'm not sure we, that is even the option, but I suppose it is. Um.
We, we, you know, i- it's not a public hearing, so, I mean, w- we would, I think we need to get a letter from the applicant or the applicant's representative that the deadline. Uh, Cassandra knows the language, that the deadline. Um, it will not be held, that it'll be extended to beyond our next meeting date.
Yeah, our, our next two meeting dates are February twenty eighth and March sixth, so. I would suggest to be careful is have a extension to our March sixth meeting. But we would take this up on twenty eighth, hoping, you know, I'm, I'm sure we could get town council's opinion in the next three weeks, uh.
But it's not a public hearing, so do we need to continue something like that's not a public hearing?
Yeah, alright, well, I, but I, I don't wanna be jammed, no, but we need something in writing because we can't be jammed.
Something from the applicant that says, yes, you can have an extension on the deadline.
Alright.
There is a form um, of an extension for a deadline that both the applicant. And Tom would need to sign in agreement that you can extend, and I would agree with Tom's recommendation that you extend. To a date past the twenty eighth, that way you can discuss it on the twenty eighth, but then still have time to. You know, either sign the A and R or file a decision or whatever the case may be. Um.
But that extension is different than um, continuing a public hearing. We, we wouldn't need to continue this, it's not a public.
Alright, no, we have to do this extension, but we're.
It's just an extension to the deadline.
Brendan, I need a commitment on that because otherwise.
Oh, yeah, no, ab- absolutely, I, I can, you know.
Get a verbal as a part of the.
I need a verbal commitment because if we let this slide and it goes by default next Wednesday.
Yeah, no, no, no.
We're, we're in a position of appealing the decision then because.
No, 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 I, I'm not, we're not looking to get a constructive approval or anything like that, so we would, you know, we, we definitely continue. Until the, um, you know, at least your first meeting in March.
Yeah, you mean, extend the, extend the statutory.
Extend the statutory uh, deadline, yeah, I think it's, is it, I think it's forty-five days, but. Um. And so, and just so I'm clear, so the new, the new table and notes just. So that's what the new zoning by law is, it's not supplement to what's there today.
No.
So anything that's on there is.
It's a replacement.
Right, which. I don't see that note in there, so.
No, it's not.
I don't see it either.
And, and that, you know. I, I'll, I'll tell you this, that um. I, we, we did not discuss those other notes. In amongst the bylaw committee. I, I, I. Don't know if the judge didn't see them or ju- intentionally they were put, left out, I mean.
I mean, she might have, it might have been one.
As somebody said, there may be good reasons to leave them out, that they're ancient quirks that we don't need anymore, but.
Or it's possible it could pop up somewhere else, right? It's possible.
Possible, but I don't see it uh, quickly.
Well, Carolyn is gonna know what's in front of the attorney general's office now, and what's in front of the attorney general's office is what's.
Is what's right there on that.
Gospel.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's, it's been eliminated. Let's, let's, it's been eliminated from the, from the, what passed the town meeting in November. And if it has, that's a problem for this application to go forward. If because we're in the interim period, there's some way around that, that's what Carolyn needs to tell us. Um. Okay, I mean, that's, that's just.
Wait a minute, Tom, the reason of changing the zoning or ordinance, as we know, is to make it more rational and the judge. Said over and over again that her purpose was for the most part trying to go through something that hadn't been changed in decades. To bring it in accordance with the state, so I would not want to have a way around. Right? I mean, I feel like.
I, I, no, I'm not saying that. I don't want it, I don't wanna create ways around things either. We, we, we have eliminated those notes in the update. I assume there is a reason for it to do so, there may, because it is a quirky little thing. That allows basically for a small lot to be created in residency. Um, and I think that note is unique to residency. Um.
It is.
You know, we may want, we may want, we may not want to bring it back. And uh, but, you know. We, we're here where we are and we need an opinion of whether we can entertain this at all or not. Uh, so.
It appears to have been eliminated.
Yeah, it has been.
But it would be good to confirm with council, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a shame, if I had known this was gonna be an issue, I would have sent some, some, sent somebody, although. She probably would have sent somebody who couldn't have given us a snap opinion anyway.
So we've got a verbal extension.
We have a verbal extension.
You don't have to continue, right?
Go with that, Cassandra, if you could circulate the necessary form. Uh, we'll agree that it can be signed by, you know, and then scanned and emailed, if it can be done without original signatures, cuz I can't get to town hall tomorrow. Um.
That's fine, it's not gonna be done by. That's fine, it's not gonna be done by tomorrow, um, so. At, at the very least, I can arrange for you to uh, sign it when you come in to sign the other decisions.
Yep.
Provided before next Wednesday.
I, I just, relying on, on you Brendan and Charlie that we're doing this by extension and so that we don't run into a constructive approval.
Oh, yeah, no, ab- absolutely, you, you got my, you got my word, right, Charlie? I think Charlie's there, but.
I was gonna say, do you wanna call Charlie to confirm with him?
Well, he's, he's lis- he's listening in and he can ask to be promoted, but uh.
Yeah, he, he's on the call, is he not, Cassandra?
Yeah, he's there.
He is, he did decline, I can see if he'll be promoted at this point.
Oh, okay.
He will be joining.
He might have, he might have.
We'll get his word.
You wanna get rid of the screen share now?
Oh, sorry.
No worries.
Yes, hi, this is Tim Higginson and uh, we are fine with this approach.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Alright, we'll get that signed up and we'll, we'll put this on the agenda for the twenty eighth and uh, we'll get town council's opinion as soon as possible. Um, I'll share it, I, I have Charlie's email and I have Brendan's, I know where you, I know where to find you, Brendan.
Yes, you do. Alright.
And um, we'll get, we'll get that opinion to you as quickly as possible so you can digest it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
Good night now.
I wasn't expecting that, that kinda caught that just as I was watching it, you know, reading.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, anybody, anybody else have anything to discuss that wasn't anticipated? Well, are we set for the night? If not, if not, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Marie Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Alright, thanks.
Hi, everybody.
Night, night.
Bye bye, thank you.